Neil. Break the mics on.
I'm on.
Yes, I believe so.
Jeremy Neil. Yeah.
All set?
You're good to go.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We'll call this meeting of the Buckfield Select Board Order for September 2nd, 2025 at 6:32 PM. And we do have a quorum tonight. Under role business, self evaluations. I'll move that we table that for our next meeting.
I will second.
Any discussion?
Sandra, for those wondering, Sandra just isn't here and she was kind of our point person on that. So we'll get them next time.
All right, all those in favor, bye bye.
So I.
Peter.
Thank you. New business, a consent agenda.
I'll make motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Right, discussion. All kinds of reports in here.
So a lot of. This, this was Preston's monthly report covered. I covered a lot of it in the last meeting. Couple of notes from his. They did finish all the cross culverts on Broad School Road. So they finished that. It's a little rough right now, but it's just all getting ready for paving. So they've been busy removing the rocks and replacing those cross culverts. We, we did hire that, that new employee for public work. So we were able to split off into two crews essentially and do multiple projects at the same time. So that's going to help. We did have to rent a larger excavator because some of those rocks are just too big for our machine. So that's, that's helped out and it's also allowed us to have two machines going at once. Roadside mowing, for those that haven't noticed, has been done pretty much through the entire town. I was actually impressed how quick they could do it. I think he's got less than 40 hours into everything that he's done, but it's definitely noticeable on some of those roads that haven't really started to push in. They're not so impassable anymore. Truck 16. I know Zelia asked me about that and I did forward you a. Additional estimate on that truck. So, once they got in there to do the clutch. And the flywheel, they found that the housing for the flywheel was cracked. So in order to do the clutch, they needed to replace the flywheel or the housing. I did authorize that because we couldn't do the job without it. However, I told him I need to talk to you about this other stuff. So the motor mounts need to be done. It just needs to be done. Much of what this quote entails is the after treatment system, so the deaf system. And it's, a lot of it's just rotted out. Could we get away with not doing it right this second? Possibly. I don't know if it'll become an issue over the winter, but as you can see from this quote. If you back out the. The housing, which was 2,000, you're, you're looking at another $16,000 to fix that truck based off this quote in addition to the 9,000 that we approved to replace the clutch. So. That is a decision that you guys can bring up in other business if you want to talk about it, but I did want to share that with you. Fire department from July 1st, August 18th, 21 calls. They had two monthly meetings, three trainings, 168 call hours. The Amcus powerhead. Throttle cable snapped when Adam reported it had not been fixed, but I saw an invoice for the cable. So it may have been fixed already. I'm not sure. And then all annual services had been scheduled at the time. He reported on August 19th. They did do all the hose testing and ground ladder testing the other day. So that's been completed.
Right.
I apologize. I didn't read over Brandon's animal control reports, but they are.
He's staying busy.
They are on the file. Usually he tells you how many calls. So in July, he had 22 calls in Buckfield covering 223.8 miles. Two animals were transported to shelter, four were confirmed, returned to their owners, seven cases involved, ongoing monitoring or follow-up. One neglect case and one potential hoarding concern or under investigation. For some reason, the June one, oh, he had it broke down. Case types this month for June, he had 15 stray loose animals, three bite investigations, one livestock loose. That would be 15, 18, 19 calls in June. He did just send me August, but I'll include that in your next meeting because I didn't have time to add it to the agenda. And then the library had 464 visits in August with seven new patrons. They held 11 programs with 59 people attending. One program was the children's mineral madness sessions with Deb Johnson. Educated for Maine Mineral and Gem Museum. She provided interesting and enjoyable lessons on rocks, fossils, chemistry and crystal formation, as well as activities which the children love. They had an author come in, Tim Caverly. I apologize if I slaughtered that. To present Al Gashwood Wilderness Tales. They had a presenter from Marine Mammals of Maine in Brunswick give a talk about rescuing seals and marine animals. They did purchase some floor cushions to use for story times. Kids aren't just sitting on the ground. They're relatively inexpensive, but. Add some color to the library. They're planning a health month to provide some informative programs for the community. She's welcoming suggestions for topics. Please email her or call her if you have any ideas. And then there's a book sale which the Friends of the Library Group will hold on September 20th at the Congregational Church in East Sumner from 9 to 2. That's everything I got in there.
Wonderful.
Thank you. That's a lot of visits to the library.
Yeah, they're rocking it over there as usual.
Yeah, the, the Friends of the Library Group and, and Kathy have brought up parking as an issue. I mean, it's. I get it. We do have the park and ride across the street and there's really not much you can do for solutions there because all the property spoken for around them. But it's the same concern that like Judy's brought up numerous times about crosswalks in that area. It's just. I know we have.
It would be like MDOT, we have to reach out regarding that, right?
Well, to add a crosswalk, yes, it's a whole process. We, there technically is a crosswalk from the bridge to the old bank building. But then instead of crossing one section from the park and ride to the library, you'd have to cross. The bridge, you know, headed up High Street, then across the main road, then across Loring Hill. So I don't know what the solution is. We did purchase the stencils to paint the road because DOT told us we're responsible for doing that, but it's. It's really tough. It's a tough corner to do that. So we just haven't gotten around to repainting that. And then the bank went out of town. So there wasn't a whole lot of crossing, but.
Are people allowed to park on the side of the road on Loring Hill right next to the library? You know, do we have no parking signs up there?
No, there's no no parking signs. People have been parking there and it seems, I mean, it's not like Loring Hill is a super highway. So usually it's, it's all right.
Pretty wide considering.
I get that, you know, like people with kids and strollers, it's hard, but. That's all I can really suggest right now without blocking people and not blocking people driveways.
Okay.
All right, and we'll plan on talking about the dump truck. In other business.
Yeah, I'll set it aside right here. So.
All right, all those in favor passing the consent agenda, bye bye.
So I.
Peter.
All right, thank you. Approval of the minutes from August 19th, 2025 Select Board Meeting.
I'll make motion to approve the minutes of the August 19th, 2025 Select Board Meeting.
I will second.
Thank you. Further discussion? I didn't see anything.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor, bye bye.
So I.
Peter.
Thank you. 2024, 2025 Q4 Financial Report. Which I know I like has, so there we go.
Thought you mailed this to you before the last meeting?
Yeah.
Who, is this something that needs like a motion you discuss or is it just discussion?
So you guys accept the quarterly financial report. I can go over what you want me to. So we finished the year. The town as a whole, not counting solid waste, went slightly over budget by $1,243.99. Primary driving factor. So general administration came in under budget. Rec came in under budget, community came in under budget, debt service was slightly higher and that was on the final payment of one of our. Pieces of equipment, just the time, I don't, it came, it came in a little higher. So that's just how it worked. Public Works came in under budget. For some reason RSU 10 had two cents left. And Oxford County obviously was even. The, the biggest overage stemmed from public safety, which we had hinted towards that, you know, the repairs, excess repairs on some of the equipment that we hadn't anticipated. And then with rescue. In order to avoid overtime, which had started to get a little out of hand, we had to hire more people in order to hire new people. You had to have training. Or have training, you had to have two people on in order. So all in, public safety went, I didn't have it right from. Oh, it's on the warrant.
Yeah.
Give me one second. I'll pull it up. Wrong folder. 58,96303. So with the, with the money that would be lapsing to fund balance from the other departments. You still need a warrant article to approve the overdraft. So I, I drafted one, but essentially what it would look like is everything that's lapsing to fund balance from the stuff that wasn't expended from other departments. You would need another $1,200 roughly to cover that out of undesignated fund balance. So. On the warrant articles that you'll be looking at later, there is a draft warrant article. We can hit on it more than. Now with that said, as you move on to revenues. So a negative on this is a good thing. So for our local revenues, we were 118,639 dollars over revenue. Our state revenues were $56,000, $56,630.24 over what we accepted. For a grand total of 175,26947. So we had some money going back from some departments and then we brought in an additional 175,000. So. Obviously we want to avoid this from happening in the future and we've, I've had meetings with Stacy and we've had discussions on overtime. What, what can be covered for, for shifts? Obviously we can't control unanticipated cost equipment. I mean, we're already facing that right now with 451. So. But. That's where we're at with that. And then we finished the end of the fiscal year. We had 87.76% of taxes collected. We've since then collected more. We just printed out the 30-day notices today and I believe it was in the ballpark of 209,000 is remaining uncollected so far. So those notices will be going out Friday. People have 30 days to pay those or. A lien will be placed on those properties until they're paid off.
It's just nice to see a financial report. Not that you haven't done it for us with the past, but.
Well, it's four in a row.
Four in a row. Fantastic.
I mean, I wish, like I said, I wish there weren't any overages there. It's just.
Yeah.
I'm watching it closely. I know Stacy's watching it closely. Adam, when it comes to expenditures for the fire department, he's coming to me. He's running them by me before decisions are made. I mean, obviously if it's an emergency situation, we got to do what we got to do, but. I don't anticipate this being an issue this year.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we accept the 2024, 25 Q4 Financial Report.
I will second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, bye bye.
So I.
Peter.
I do appreciate you putting those together, Cam. I know it's.
So much fun.
And those have been, that has been posted on the website for three or four, two or three weeks. So.
Thank you, thank you.
Petition to withdraw from RSU 10.
All right, you have copies of the registered certificate. There were three petitions circulated. One by Judy Berg, one by Brittany O'Leary and one by Michelle Casey. So it's technically one petition, but we broke them up into three. So all in. We had 90 valid signatures on one, 18 valid signatures on another and 11 on the other, which they only needed 98. So on the draft warrant that is in your packet that we'll discuss later, there is a warrant article on there, which is part of the 12-step. Their 22-step process. For withdrawal, but. It's worded exactly like it is in the state's document. The only difference is I left highlighted in yellow, insert dollar amount. I did some research. Emden tried to do this a little while ago. The amount that they had on their warrant was 50,000. I, I don't know where, what the right answer is. So we can discuss that when we get to that portion, but. This is Alyssa's delivery to you guys that it's certified and everything is valid.
Right. We don't need to take any voting action on that, right?
That was just information purposes for when we get to the warrant article. Obviously you'll make your decision then when you approve that or revise it or whatever.
Yep. Yes, Neil.
So another piece of information, and I can process information under Cameron this week, is I did get in contact with a lawyer that has experience with withdrawals. And I can give Cameron that information. So when you guys get to that point where you want to figure that piece of it out, you will have that option.
Thank you.
Did that individual happen to give you a hypothetical number that they should be looking at?
No, they did not, but they did say that they were interested in representing the towns to do a withdrawal. They have experience doing it. And I told them that I would bring it to the board and also to you guys. To see what's the next step and then probably the next step would be a informal meet-in with them to get that number and kind of. Look at that process.
So. This is me just spitballing because you know, I'm no expert in RSU with processes. So obviously we have to get this warrant finalized so that I can get the ballots printed up and we already have the special town meeting planted, planted, planned, scheduled. My recommendation for now would be to stick with that $50,000. I mean, there's nothing saying that they can spend less, but I'd rather have a number that. We've seen other people use just, just so that there's, it's there because the other two towns are going to have their vote at the same time. And we don't want to slow the process up.
Yep, that makes sense to me. Thank you. Thank you very much, Neil.
You're welcome.
All right. Solar farm ordinance.
So I included a draft in your packet. I also provided it to Sandra. I know there's been a lot of talk amongst people in town. So. This draft, I believe, so we passed the moratorium. The moratorium expired. You can. Go and vote on another moratorium. Or. What this is proposing, and it actually references the comprehensive plan and preserving natural resources and our agricultural lands. Is this ordinance is short and to the point. It essentially doesn't allow any future development of solar farms. Except for anything that's already in the planning works or whatever. However, it does allow you on your property to put in whatever you need to operate or to run your. House business, whatever.
Yep.
It just doesn't allow the commercial developments that would, you know. That we're seeing pop up everywhere. So I had provided this to all of you prior to the meeting. And I know there's been a desire for something. So. If you've had a chance to review it, I mean, like I said, an ordinance can always, we can come back and amend it to allow, actually. Moscow, I think, was one of the towns that a few years ago they did something similar to this and then they came back a few years later and they revised it and allowed some development. But rather than pass a moratorium over and over again, this seems to be what people are looking for, for the short term. It's a good start and then. Maybe. Look at. Other options in the future. If people want to, if the, if the town wants to allow these things in town, but. When I drafted this, I, I tried to stay true to the comprehensive plan and what they were looking, the town was looking to do, which was preserve our natural resources, which. I don't want to give my opinion, but.
Yeah, I, I haven't talked to anybody that wants commercial solar farms in town.
I mean, we definitely want to see. You know, environmentally friendly ways of powering people's houses. But again, like I said, that's why this allows for that on your own property for the purpose of supporting that property.
So this is different than what the previous planning board had drafted? It's like separate?
The planning, they drafted one, but they never voted on it. And that one basically allowed, that one allowed it up to.
Based on acreage, right?
Yeah, and it was, it, it basically allowed townwide like close to 150, 200 acres of development. So. The concerns I've been hearing at the town office and the people that come in and talk to me is the opposite of wanting it to happen. Cause you know, once you, once you start letting these things pop up, it's, they're stuck there for 25 years, right? So. This was my recommendation based off of what I've heard from people.
Yeah.
And again, it's up to the voters, right? So if. Everybody's in agreeance to give them an option to vote on it, they can either vote it down or they, you know, if more people support developing that stuff, then. They'll vote against it and then we'll have to look at a different option, but. I think we started talking about this like a year and a half ago and we're, we were kind of here without any real plans. So.
Yep.
Me personally, I don't want to see 50 acres cut down next to my house and have a bunch of solar farms or solar panels put in there. I, I just, that's me personally.
Yeah, on a personal level, I agree. I don't want to, but I've also heard from multiple people, they don't want that either.
Right. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of places you can almost say hide them, but put them out of the visual view of people in Buckfield because there's been so much clearing that no matter where you look at it, you're going to see it.
And this like holds up? This is all we need? And it's legally valid? Or? Do you think that if someone did want to install a solar farm? There would be opportunity to fight this, I guess, like criminal authority, right?
Every ordinance we pass is going to have to, it, it's, it's got a clause that if a court deems that it's, it's not legal.
Yeah.
Then it would get thrown out. So.
Okay.
This is one of the shorter ordinances I've looked at. I mean, I've looked at the lengthy 50, 60-page ones that allow them. I've looked at short and simple ones that only allow a certain size. I've looked at. And that's usually how I compile and develop these ordinances. So.
And then we'll have something. It's not just the moratorium after moratorium. We can amend that.
Yeah, right.
If needed.
And amendment goes before the voters.
Yes, anytime that would, anytime an ordinance would have to be amended unless in the ordinance, it specifically says that, say, the select board had the authority to like fee schedules, right? That it would have to go back before the voters so that they could make those changes, which is what happened in Moscow. I think it was Moscow. There's only like 19 people that showed up. But. I think this is a better solution, especially with the struggle we're having with the planning board and, you know, getting, you know, consistent membership. And having them start a project and be able to stick with it until it's through is.
Yeah, we'll.
We essentially have a moratorium until we change it.
Yep.
But you can still have solar on your own property for your own purposes.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion that the Select Board approves the Town of Buckfield Solar Farm Ordinance to be sent to the ballot.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, bye bye.
So I.
Peter.
Thank you. Special town meeting, why, from November 4th, 2025. Cameron has prepared for us.
Yeah, review it because I didn't read it before I printed it and there's certain areas that obviously we need to look at. So. Article one's got to be there. It's there every time. Article two is the whole reason we called a special town meeting, which was to elect a selectman for the remainder of a three-year term ending on June 30th, 2026. We do have two people that have turned in nomination papers. They were certified. So Joanne Bly and Kyle McCafferty will be on the ballot. Article three is the question pertaining to the. Over expenditure for public safety. So that one says to see if the town will vote to appropriate a total of 58,96303 from the undesignated fund balance to cover the public safety over expenditure for fiscal year 24, 25. That we got to do. Article four. Based off what you just voted on. And this has to be worded exactly the way it, it is here. Shell and ordinance entitled Town of Buckfield Solar Farm Ordinance to be enacted unless you want to name it something different. But it has to be the specific name of the ordinance. You would pick your thinking.
I was thinking. Um, I mean, I was just wondering the difference. I mean, doesn't matter. The difference between like Town of Buckfield Solar Farm Ordinance versus Town of Buckfield Commercial Solar Facility Ordinance or whatever. But I mean.
It was shorter.
It's tomato, tomato.
I think, I, I was, I guess I was thinking if somebody was looking at Buckfield to find out if they could do solar farms, they'd probably search solar farm ordinance and it'd be easily captured by Google. So when the ordinance gets, when the ordinance, when the warrant gets posted. And a tested copy from. Alyssa will be attached to the warrant. So that'll be public and it'll be included on the website as well. So they'll see a copy of the draft that you just voted on. Article five, now this is the one I, I provided you all. I reached out to Andrew Scoggan Bank because I know it was discussed by Martha when she was here. And we've been going back and forth on what to do with 451. Talked about the hours. We've talked about quotes anywhere from 5,000 to 20,000, which has me concerned because some people aren't picking up on some things that other shops are picking up on and vice versa. What I did was I, for the sake of doing this draft, I went with the highest figure that was there, which was the 430 out of the ones that I quoted and, and gave you.
Yeah.
The lowest one was 300,000. They sold that 300,001, but they've got more coming. So it's not out of question. That would be up to you all to decide whether you wanted to go with a van chassis if it were approved or truck chassis if it were approved. But I wanted to use the higher number. So I pushed that figure out to Andrew Scoggan Bank, asked him to put proposal together so that we would know what that would look like annually. He gave me options for a five-year, a seven-year and a 10-year. We talk about rotating ambulances every 10 years. We've been wanting to get onto that, that track. But would you want to be paying on an ambulance for 10 years? And then as soon as you make your last payment? Get another one? I don't know. So the, the sheet that isn't online, but is in front of you shows. If the town were to go with the most expensive option that I had quoted out, which was 430, a five-year term at 5.69, which would be in five annual payments. We don't do the monthly, we do it annually. That'd be $101,000 a year. Seven-year would be 5.79 with seven annual payments of 76 or a 10-year would be 6.09% at 58,682. So I just, I wanted to provide you with the math, the numbers so that you knew what you were looking at and we can revise this however you want. You can leave it the way it's worded or we can specify a specific term. Not to exceed a specific term and a specific interest rate. I think you have a copy.
I, yeah, it's just the document I opened. So I'm just going to add it this way.
So. So. I mean, we can talk about four, five, one, and its current condition in other business, I forgot to add it back here, um, after. But I know there was that frustration of, we're always kicking the can down the road, why don't we just ask? The voters to see what they want to do, so, I mean. You have a special town meeting coming up, you ask it, if they say no, they say no, they say yes, they say yes, but. Right now, we're down to one ambulance. And if four, five, two goes down, I'm, I'm gonna start paying a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day to have an ambulance in this town. Which is approximately forty-three-ish, forty-something thousand dollars, so it's pretty close to the ten-year annual payment. Ideas, thoughts, discussion?
I guess the question that I am curious about, which I could probably do the math out on, would be like. What the total amount of the interest paid on each of these lease terms would be?
Yeah, so I mean, on the ten-year, that four thirty will be what, five hundred eighty-six thousand eight twenty-five? You'd be paying a lot of interest on that. Whereas your five-year would be five oh five? I mean, there's no good way to really finance ambulances. Actually, Judy Berg dropped off an article talking about this, not recent, ju- just last week, I believe. I've got it on my desk about how these services are trying to do this. There's not a lot of municipal services still that provide the service, but unfortunately, the services around us don't have the capacity to. Serve our community. So. If we're gonna continue to have that service and honor our contracts with our other communities that we serve. And provide the mutual aid for the services that we do, we have to have the tools to be able to do the job.
Yeah, you won't find many ambulance services looking for more business right now. And we're somewhat of an island up here, because. You know, trying to get somebody else to do it, you just.
The communities, I mean, Pace is a good example, the communities that Pace serve are so scattered. And, you know, that's not to say that those services wouldn't quote us on what it would, what, you know, give us a quote, but. It, I just, look at what's going on in Waterville right now. They, they asked for a new truck because their hospital closed down, right? And they're having to drive, what, forty-five minutes to the hospital? And the neighboring services are just like, we can't. It's, we're lucky we have a hospital on both sides of us, but. I mean, there's a reason some of our calls are in Hebron, because sometimes we can get there quicker than. Pace coming around.
We always try to do the right thing for the patient in those cases, you know, so obviously, right there. You know, but. Yeah, as far as folks being competitive in EMS anymore.
No, and we do, we do have to acknowledge that we, we do have a contract with Hartford and Summer too. Just saying, ah, our truck's broke, you're gonna have to kick a call to somebody else.
And the, the volume has been up, it's been busy.
We, we have a lot of calls in Summer and Hartford. And we've, I mean, you look at Stacy's reports every month, we end up in Turner, we end up in Norway. Ish, that area, you know, sometimes Pace gets overloaded and we have to help them too.
Yeah, everybody's been busy, I mean, even the fire department, last couple of months, you saw twenty-one calls, that's.
And I'd like to say, I, I see the call volume going down in both service, I do not see the call volume going down. If anything, I see the call volume skyrocketing way too fast. Between just regular sickness and. Just everywhere you go right now, drugs are a big thing.
But we don't have to pick the.
We don't have to pick the truck.
For the financing.
The way, so the way the warrant article's worded, it says to see if the town will authorize the town treasurer to act on the town's behalf and obtain a loan for a principal amount, not to exceed four thirty, so. If they approve this, and you as a board chose to go with a van chassis for three hundred to three hundred and fifty, whatever the option was. You have, you would have the authority to make that decision, you don't have to spend that full four thirty. We, I use that because we know that's how much those ones are, so depending on availability. Now, I did talk, I have talked and confirmed that, so what we'd be looking at is a demo truck. We're not special ordering this the way we want it, it's gonna be a truck on the lot ready to go. That, depending on what we're looking for, we could get within a couple of months to six months, because they're. Always coming in, the orders that were made during COVID are coming in now. But if we wanted to spec a truck, we are looking at two and a half, three years. And we don't have two and a half to three years. And Bob's, Rob's frowning, because he's saying it's not two and a half, it's more like four.
It's awful. Takes forever to get a truck.
You know, there, there are options out there for used ones that I had brought to you originally, problem is they come available, they're out of state, they disappear as soon as I bring them to you.
Yeah, you'll find private services buy them up, because they're so, it's so hard to come by, so that as soon as they see something, they grab it, so. Municipalities and, you know, it just takes us too long to buy things, right?
I see it on a Monday, it's gone on a Wednesday. You know what I mean, so it's.
Oh, yeah, hot commodity right now.
I mean, if we do, if this fails and we have to look at another option. We do have the money in the reserve, we haven't spent any money on four, five, one yet. You know, Autotronics does have a lot of used stuff, it's not stuff that I would recommend buying, but. There's maybe better options than what we currently have sitting at Laurinell. So, and again, that's just kicking the can down the road, and a couple of years from now, we're gonna be having the same discussion, so. That's why this whole discussion got started with Martha that day, and I get where she's coming from too. We were trying to find ways to not. Have to spend that kind of money, because I mean, that's a lot of money, but. Do you want to start this process now, get it, and then get into that cycle where we're not trying to put out a fire every two years?
Yeah, we purchased that pre-COVID, had we but know. That a new truck back then. Two hundred and sixty-eight thousand or so. Yeah.
Yeah, they've doubled.
Had we know.
And that was also when you could buy a fire truck for five hundred thousand dollars. We haven't even started talking about those yet. You know, we're putting a lot of, we've put a lot of preventive, preventative maintenance and regular service work into our fire apparatus too. This year, we're gonna be putting some more into the tanker, just age, you know, metalwork and stuff like that. We're doing whatever we can to keep them running. I know they don't get a lot of miles, but they get a lot of hours, but. Unfortunately, with this, we. We gotta figure out what to do. I think at least asking the town what they want to do, if they say no, we know where to go from there. So if, I mean, we can leave it worded like this, and then you'll have those options of the terms, or you can. Include not to exceed, or for, you can say a ten-year term or a seven-year term, or you can just leave it open-ended like this and know that those are your three options.
I, I don't know, I feel like we should leave it open-ended for now. I, I'm actually leaning, my personal feeling would be toward the seven-year. Just because the.
You'd at least pay it off for the year that you're supposed to replace it?
Yeah, yeah, you have it a few years, um, and the, the interest rate is a little more reasonable than the ten-year. Like, there's a big jump between five, seven, and then the ten, you know? But that's just me. I could be persuaded either direction.
No, that's a good point, it is a, is a sizable jump between the seven-year and the ten-year term, interest-wise.
So I'd recommend leaving it open-ended, and then. Depending on what happens at the meeting, if it's approved, you guys can figure out what you want to do from there. And then the big one, everybody's been talking about Article Six. So I also had included a copy of the, um, twenty-two step process for withdrawing, so we did have that, those successful petitions. They did receive enough signatures that were valid. Um, so this is worded right from that sheet, which is what state says you have to ask. Um, and the fifty thousand dollars is the number that I put in there, that's what M D had put in theirs, theirs failed, but. Like I said, that's, that's a cap, we can't exceed that amount, if it ends up being less, it's less.
Right, and the, you know, we want folks to understand that this withdrawal process is. You know, they may want to withdraw, but they don't want to spend the money, but you have to, right?
Right.
That's the.
They also need to understand too, that just because the withdrawal process is initiated and it starts and you go through the steps, doesn't mean that in the end. It's approved by the state and it happens, so it could, you know, you have to spend the money to figure out if it's feasible and, and, and get that. Drafted up and there's a lot to it.
A lot, yeah.
And there's lawyers that make a lot more money than I do to understand it, so. That's really where the money comes from, is law firms and, and, and negotiating that withdrawal agreement, coming up with. What that budget's gonna look like for year one and what it's actually gonna cost the town. I mean, we've had a lot of great volunteers at those meetings. Siphoned through budgets that are provided by the RSU, you know, making their best guesses that they can. But if people are serious about this, this is what they're gonna have to approve. If they don't support it, then they'll have to reject it. Those are not, that's all six warrant articles that I have on there. I don't think I missed any.
It's like Neil isn't on with us anymore, do we know if, I mean, you know, we're using M D's numbers, do we know? Is that like a comparable school size hours? Or I guess it's more the legal.
A municipality pulling out of an RSU, and, you know, and, and that's the number that they use for. Their attempt. So, and, and I don't really know how this works with three municipalities all at the same time, that would be pulling out to inevitably go together. Uh, you know, would build population, I'm not looking at pupil count, but population is what, two thousand eighty-three? Summer's somewhere in the nine hundred to a thousand, referred seventeen hundred, you know, does that get broken up on the legal costs? Based off the population, I don't, I don't know how that's all gonna play out. I don't know if each town has to do it separate and, and then work together while they're doing it separate, like, I don't know those specifics. I just know that petition was turned in and this was the next step.
And there's now money set aside to put toward that.
If it were to be approved. And then, I mean, realistically, in order for this to work. I would assume that all three towns would need to successfully pass this for it to be feasible.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Oh, I think Judy's raising her hand.
Oh, yes, Judy?
Well, yes, all three, that's why we weren't successful in twenty fourteen, because we didn't have Hartford. We do need all three towns, but I do have, we, we got quite a few signatures, everybody seemed quite happy about it. And we are gonna have some help from Brian Deco Thard. Uh, if you remember, he once was the superintendent of, of SAT thirty-nine, and he is familiar with withdrawal. So I'm hoping that he will be able to give us some of his experience.
So did I miss anything? No, I don't think so. Is there anything I need to change? Is there more descriptions that you would like me to include under articles? I mean, I know Article three is.
Yeah, I mean, would it make sense to add a brief explanation of what happened with the public safety budget? Just, I mean, I have to assume that most of the people. Will vote on this, will probably be hearing about this sort of stuff for the first time while they're in the ballot box.
And, and if that's the case, they're not gonna see it on the ballot, they'll only see the question. This is just for the warrant that gets posted. So, and I have to get this uploaded, Alyssa, Alyssa, technically, we were supposed to have it sent off to ESS for programming. Or for approval yesterday, no, today, and I'm, they're closed now, so it's gonna be a day late, but. Um, you know, all I can say is, like I stated before, wages. And unanticipated repairs really, really drove this. In order to bring on enough people to be able to cover the shifts and avoid the overtime. Can't just throw somebody from Bethel in a truck and expect them to drive around Buckfield and figure out where all these roads are and how we operate. Um, you also wouldn't want the chief throwing somebody on a truck without knowing, do I trust that person, so.
Absolutely.
There's. I wish we could do it the way we used to years ago, but it's just, it, and even, even Judy said to me the other day, you're right, volunteerism is hard to find. And it's just, you know, back in the day, it was, your neighbor was ready to go and didn't want anything for it. Unfortunately, it's the only people that do it, it's their livelihood, and yes, no, Buckfield Rescue is not their full-time job, trust me, but. It's part of their overall. But from a liability standpoint, you know, the way Stacy does her training for new hires, um, before she signs them off. I wouldn't have changed it. I can't shut down rescue. Just like I. Much as the unanticipated repairs and fire, you know, it's like, if there's a fire, you gotta respond to the fire.
I mean, that would be my only question, thank you.
If you kind of word up something with me right now, I can, actually, I gotta send it over to me so that I can edit the document, or actually, before you leave tonight, I can edit the document. And then have you sign it so that I can have her upload that stuff tomorrow. You're good with words, Azelia?
On the spot.
I mean. Short and sweet, but to the point of like, just letting, you know, so it's wages. And unanticipated. Actually, didn't I, when I sent you the financial report, didn't I type something up in that email that explains? On your beer?
That's fine.
I'm looking. Alright, so that would have been, when was our last meeting? Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, yep. Never getting my email on the first shot.
The driving factors are unanticipated repairs to apparatus for both fire and rescue, as well as rescue department wages. Um, and I said, early in the fiscal year, as we were bringing on new employees, we had additional staff on during training periods, this was something that we didn't budget for. And then I said, unfortunately, in order to combat overtime, we needed to bring on more providers. The chief and I have since discussed overtime, as well as sticking to the firm budgeted hours, unless we cannot avoid it for new hire training. Currently, our roster is in very good shape, I mean, that's kind of messy, but. Currently, our roster is in very good shape. I mean, that's kind of messy, but.
Yeah, but we condensed that down to a.
The the cause for this over expenditure is unanticipated vehicle repair needs and increased training, training expenses for additional providers. That sounds encompassing, short.
Um, the one thing I didn't get on, and I know we're off subject now, but I feel it's, we'll discuss it on the twenty-third. On that financial report that you got, you didn't see the overage for solid waste, which will come from the bank account, but it's gonna do, it's gonna hit that bank account hard. Um, because all those tipping fees resulted in.
Yeah.
A fifty-seven thousand dollar overage for solid waste, which you saw that increase in the budget for this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But then Main Waste Energy hit us with the twenty-something thousand dollar special assessment too, so we're already eighty grand into. But. The three of you are on the solid waste committee, right?
Yes.
Yes, we are. Meeting at the end of September.
December twenty-third.
Saying updated policy for. The transfer station.
Thirty dollars a mattress?
Yep.
That'd be something. It's gotta be like a commercial permit or something, because you've got a handful of people. That renovate buildings out of town, that just come there, crash here, so.
Yeah, we are not a wealthy enough community to be subsidizing that sort of activity, that's for sure.
All right. So everything else looks good on that? You'll just now prove as amended?
Yep.
Oh, OT, I think you just said training.
Hmm, okay, yeah. I will make the motion that we accept the Town of Buckfield Special Town Meeting warrant articles for the, on November fourth, twenty twenty-five. With changes.
I'll second that. All right, further discussion? All those in favor, bye-bye.
Azalea, I.
Peter, I.
Many appointments?
I will make a motion that we approve. Sure, I'm sorry, that we approve, uh, Thomas Damon to the. Uh, Recreation Committee for a term of one year.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, bye-bye.
Azalea, I.
Peter, I.
I will also make the motion that we appoint Cameron Hankley to the Recreation Committee for a term of one year.
I'll second that. Further discussion? All those in favor, bye-bye.
Azalea, I.
Peter, I.
I will also make a motion that we approve Kate Grimm to the Recreation Committee for a three-year term.
I will second that. Further discussion? All those in favor, bye-bye.
Azalea, I.
Peter, I.
One more.
And I will make the motion that we appoint Christina Simpson to the Planning Board for a one, term of one year.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Christina, and Tom, and Cameron, and Kate.
Yes.
Much appreciated, much needed.
Planning Board can now meet.
Incredible.
All those in favor, bye-bye.
Azalea, I.
Peter, I.
That is great. All right, other business, we're gonna talk about.
Well, it's actually just a, on our new business.
Amended.
Amended.
Yeah.
Number eight, okay. Talk about that one.
Wherever it went.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
Sorry, I looked at the wrong one.
No worries.
Uh, municipal quick claim deed. I'll make a motion that we approve the quick claim deed for property ID zero, zero, three, zero, zero, seven, zero, zero, nine, zero, zero, one.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, bye-bye.
Azalea, I.
Peter, I.
Thank you, Azalea, I just looked at the wrong one.
No, no worries. No worries.
Get the right one. All right. Now, other business. And. We're gonna talk about the, was it Truck sixteen?
Oh, yeah, that. I was wondering why you're pointing over here. So. The clutch needed to be done, obviously, in order for the truck to go down the road. Um, the town's not exempt from emissions standards and, uh, you know, it's. It working right now, um, but it's rotted pretty bad.
Yeah.
Um, and those components are are pretty pricey. The outlet modules, twenty-two hundred, the inlet modules, forty-five hundred. Um. I haven't looked at the, the DPF filter itself. But my guess is it's rotted, which is why it's being replaced, because usually you can bake those a couple of times, or it could be an old one, I don't know, but. The filter itself's twenty-nine hundred dollars, so you can see how this adds up to that.
Oh, yeah.
Eighteen thousand dollars. We need our three-wheelers for plowing. Right now, we're down to one truck. The other truck needs to go off and have a, it's got a computer issue. I think the ECM's bad and needs to be replaced. It's probably gonna run me three thousand dollars to replace that, but this is exactly why I increased the. Um, maintenance budget for these trucks. My concern with this is this one truck is taking up about half my maintenance budget. But. Do we put Band-Aids on it and just do the clutch and hope that the DEF system continues to work throughout the winter, or brings it down in the middle of winter? I, I don't know. I told them I needed to talk to you, because you would have to approve this. I did approve, like I said, I did approve the housing, because we couldn't do the, the clutch and the flywheel without the housing. So that was another two thousand. Two thousand forty-three dollars. So the clutch job itself with that housing came out to eleven thousand, if they weren't able to turn the flywheel, which they haven't pulled me yet. Um, and then the motor mounts are the other thing, like, even if we don't do the DEF system, the motor mount should be done. But if they're already in there and they're, they're working on everything, it seems like it, it could potentially cost us more if we wait for it to break. And I'm not really in the habit of letting the trucks break.
Right.
Because plowing Buckfield with one truck sucks.
Yeah, but Big Rig's a reputable organization. They say it's broke, I believe them, you know? There.
The truck's already tore apart in their, in their shop.
Yeah, I mean, what choice have you got? It's, um, how long, how much longer are we gonna have that?
This truck?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a twenty-twelve, I mean.
Oh, it's old.
It's not at the bottom of our list of trucks to go. The International's the one that we're looking to get rid of next. So I'd say another at least three to four years, I'd like to get out of this truck.
Yeah, and I mean, we hear the feedback every winter. It's not like we want to be down a truck.
No.
In fact, it would be cool to be up a truck in our dreams.
Yeah, and keep in mind, this is the truck we just put, last year, we put a forty-five thousand dollar body on, so our anticipation is actually long, in three to four years.
Yeah.
So, for us to put that brand-new body on it and then limp it around with a bad DEF system and hope it doesn't, I. I mean, this is all stuff I used to sell in another world. And I hated it because it was a tough sell, because nobody wants a DEF system, but unfortunately, the government says you have to have it. It's just everything's very expensive. I mean, every component of that system is is pricey.
Of course.
But I don't anticipate we would ever have to do anything on that DEF system again while we have the truck, except for maybe the filter.
Yeah.
So. That's where we're at with that.
So do you need approval from us, like a voted approval to?
Yeah, I can approve that amount.
To spend the money? So, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the repair on.
Additional repairs.
Oh, yeah, the initial, the very approved part of it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the additional repair for. Eighteen thousand two hundred and four dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, bye-bye.
Azalea, I.
Peter, I.
All right.
So I just have one question.
Yeah.
Not about this. Um, so I'm assuming where we're going to the Special Town Meeting in November. We put the brakes on four, five, one until we figure out what the town's gonna vote on.
Probably a good idea. I mean, what's the? As you get into it, right, it's anywhere between, I believe them, anywhere between five grand and twenty-something thousand. It could be.
I mean, you just saw an example of, we got a quote for nine thousand, it got in there, and then all of a sudden, it went to.
Yeah.
So, I I don't, I don't wanna. I wouldn't recommend burning. Reserve money. On fixing something that, I mean, there's no guarantee on. I mean, I hate taking the risk with just one truck.
That's what I don't like, and in the end, I mean, what will we be doing with four, five, one? I mean, I would presume we would try and sell it. Would we be able to sell it in its current condition?
I mean, somebody would buy it in its current condition. I don't know if we'd get much for it, but even if we put twenty thousand dollars into it, there's no guarantee we're gonna get twenty thousand dollars back.
Yeah.
Whereas, worst-case scenario, if four, five, two goes down. If we have to rent one by the day at a hundred and twenty-five, I mean, how many days can you get for twenty thousand dollars?
Right.
Almost half a year. Yeah, that's a hundred and sixty days, so I forget, he's really good with math. So, I mean.
Right.
Right now, it's over at. Warring Hill out of service, so if this goes to vote and it's rejected, we'll have to come back and decide.
Yeah.
What to do, whether that, and that's the other thing, even if this is rejected and you choose to go with a used unit for what we have in money. If we put twenty grand into that, you're taking twenty grand away from what you could get.
Yeah, yeah.
And oftentimes, you can get whoever you're buying from to take it. Which is what I would recommend, because selling a used ambulance is like. Like an old motorcycle, you know, it's hard to get rid of.
Yeah.
Um. You know, so if you can figure out a way with those folks to take it away.
Yeah, yeah.
And get a little money out of it.
Okay.
It's often worth it, rather than sitting in a barn somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good to know.
The other thing too is, you know, with this financing, as we talked about the four hundred and thirty thousand, we do have that money in the reserve, so. When, if it does pass and you do get around to financing, you could use that as a down payment on that to reduce that annual cost, which. Would be my recommendation, because that's the purpose of that.
Agreed, yeah.
We just don't have enough for the full.
Right.
Shebang, yeah.
Right.
But the more we have in there. It's all accumulating interest right now.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah.
The more you can reduce those annual payments. And I can have him run those numbers once we find out whether it's approved or not, to say, hey, if we put a down payment of this, how much would that reduce those annual payments? Because there's no prepayment penalty on any of that stuff either.
Excellent, yeah.
All right, so, put that on pause for now.
Yeah.
If anything happens to four, five, two, I'll let you know. My first call will be to rent another truck, but.
Yeah, of course.
We've put quite a bit of work into that, so I'm pretty confident in that truck for right now.
Yeah.
That's all I got, Peter, I promise.
No, that's. Any other, other business? No. Okay, all right, uh, public comment? Do you have anything, Judy? Yep.
Oh, you're muted.
Oh. Nope, she got the pop-up.
We're gonna unmute you here.
Yeah, we're asking you to unmute Judy, if you could hit confirm or something. You're fine, you're fine.
Sorry, sorry.
There we go.
Okay, you know me, I'm always going to make a comment. Um, I I heard that the dam was being taken down. And I just wondered, um, if that's the case, and if there is an engineering report, and in case there's any liability, who is liable?
We have signed a memorandum of understanding with the Trout Brooks Unlimited, if I recall correctly.
Trout's Unlimited.
Trout's Unlimited.
I don't know. We have not been, we have not been informed that any.
Action.
Any action has been taken. I've been updated a couple of times about funding, and they're still in the, the, trying to find funding stage, as far as I understand. Um. Gene McKenna did stop into the town office one day, I was, or at a time when I wasn't here, um, so I gotta reach out to him, but I will follow up with Gene and find out where they're at. Because I've not heard it, I have not heard that or or seen any activity that would confirm that.
Oh, okay, and and I had one other question. What, what, how how is the James Jordan big quest working out?
It's still with the lawyers, it's still with the estate. Um. Basically, the last conversation I had with the personal rep for his estate was that. They've gotten everything off the property that that they intended, so whatever's there is gonna go to the town, but I'm, I'm just. My request to them was based off of Jim's, um, or Jane, Mr. Jordan's will, which said that the. Parcel with the house would be surveyed, and I haven't received a survey yet, so that may be the the hangup, because I requested the survey.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Judy.
Unless anyone has anything else, and I'll make a motion that we adjourn at seven thirty-nine PM.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, thank you.
Thank you.